I'd like to call the meeting of Independent School District 271 Board of Directors to order. Start off by taking a roll call. Looks like everyone's here except Director Bartolata. She has an excused absence. Ask you to join me in standing and saying, "Pledge allegiance to the flag."
(inaudible)
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any conversation? All right. All right, we're going to move to...
Yeah.
We're going to move to a vote. That's what we're moving to. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we're looking at item number four on the agenda, recognition of students, staff, and public. I'm going to... Let's do... Our friend. Friend of the school district. Let's see, we have Portland Avenue United Methodist Church is here, and we have a couple of presenters this evening. Read this little script here. The district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners in the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. Our friend being recognized this evening is the Portland Avenue United Methodist Church. I'd like to invite Roberto Cantu, Assistant Principal at Valley View Elementary School, and Kay Miller, Youth and Family Education Coordinator at Pond Center, to make tonight's introduction. Why don't you come on up?
Good evening. I'd like to just say a few words on behalf of Valley View Elementary. Principal Kubis could not be here tonight. He's attending a conference out of state, but he wishes he could be here tonight. One of the missions of Valley View Elementary is to partner within the community, and we have done that with Portland Avenue. And we'd like to invite Pastor Susan up here.
And I'm Kay Miller, and I had the great pleasure of presenting to a group of people at Portland Avenue Methodist Church on, believe it or not, early childhood and school readiness. We had a small but mighty group, and what was really exciting to me was that these weren't just young parents or school people interested in early childhood and school readiness, but a community. There were lots of people, probably my age, who were very interested and engaged in learning about the importance of early childhood and what they can do as a community to support the youngest learners in our district.
I'd like to invite Beth Cameron up here as well. She's the co-chair of our Children, Youth, and Family Ministries, who works with kind of organizing programs around that. As a faith community, we just believe that it's important to put our faith into action. And a few years back, we started a revisioning process and realized we needed to deepen our impact into the community, and began dialogues with Les and with Andy Kubis. And just think, this is sort of an emerging, bubbling-up kind of ministry or outreach. We have worked with Valley View Elementary. We do a drive in the fall for winter clothing for the students at Valley View Elementary. We've supplied whatever they need. If they ask us for something, we do our best to give it. And so, there was a game night with math, and so we supplied some of the games. And I'm meeting with Andy next week to figure out how we further and deepen that connection. But also, there's a concern with the achievement gap, and how can we work as a community partner in that? And so, within conversations with Karen Catigan and then Kay Miller, we were doing, beginning, a beginning program of community meals followed by presentations targeting parents of things that they would be of interest to parents in learning about how they can be better parents for their children. And the meal is free, and we invite the public, and it's an emerging kind of thing. And we're going to partner also with Normandale Highlands United Methodist in Bloomington, which is on the west end of Bloomington, whereas we're on the east end, and hopefully, we can cover a wider, see the broader community together as part of our outreach and make a bigger impact. Might Beth just say a few words?
I'll just say that both of my children went to Valley View Elementary, so I've been super excited to be able to give something back to that school since my children are now seniors. I have a senior at Kennedy and a freshman at Kennedy. And they've been, had a great education in the Bloomington system, so I'm excited to be able to give something back. So, thank you for having us here.
It's a deep honor for you to recognize us. This really caught me by surprise, and so I am deeply honored, and we will continue to be an active partner in any way that we can. And we have a church meeting, believe it or not, that we need to run off to, so we have to go. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much for what you do for our community. All right, next up, I have the honor of presenting a giant check to the president of the Education Foundation of Bloomington. Mary, would you like to come on up and meet me over there? I'm going to run from here to there. So, I'm just going to steal a little bit of airtime here. Back on the 22nd of February, we had a pancake breakfast. The board hosted a pancake breakfast where you could come out and get a good meal over at Appleby's on 96th and Lindell. And the proceeds of that fundraising pancake breakfast went to the Education Foundation of Bloomington. And that's why I'm here tonight, to give Mary this gigantic check for $908. And I'm going to ask Mary... We'll slow it down a little bit so we can get a photo opportunity. Now, I'm told, Mary, that you can't actually cash this check. You can hang it up wherever you like. I'll let Mary share a little information about what she does. Thank you very much.
Well, this is terrific. What can I say? The Education Foundation of Bloomington provides a lot of support to all students of Bloomington through our five basic programs. And all five, no surprise, need funding, so this will definitely be used quickly and with a lot of impact. Just a little extra note is that even after you guys did your calculations on how much you got, I actually did receive some more money. So, actually, the donation will be well over $1,000. And we need it. We really think that our education system in Bloomington is terrific, and we want to help support students in any way that we can through our programs. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's see. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? I don't see a whole bunch of hands out there. Amazing. All right, now, I understand that we have some students representing government class. Is that right? You're here to get your government credit? Okay, so let me just read a little bit here. Okay, I tell you what. Do you have a representative of your group that wants to come up and talk about your fundraiser? How about that?
My name is Ashley. I am a junior at Kennedy High School, and we are part of a travel study class. Our goal this year has been to raise $50,000 to go to New York this spring break coming up here in April. And so, at this point, we only have about $4,300 left to raise. We've worked with FedEx. We've done a fundraiser with Mo's Grill. We made a GoFundMe account that's raised nearly $4,000 now. Some of our classmates have gone door-to-door. So, now, at this point, we're just so close to our goal that we're asking for any help that we can get.
Forty-three hundred short.
No.
Wow. And you did all that in the winter when it was snowing?
We started in September.
All right. And so, Ashley, tell me again, what the date is when you're going?
It's from March 31st to the 4th, April 4th.
March 31st, April 4th. And if people wanted to donate to that, could they do that at your school?
Uh, yes.
Do you know where that money would be accepted?
We have a GoFundMe account. We can give you the web address for that. Otherwise, a check out to the District 271, I think, is accepted as well.
Okay, and in the memo, they need to tell us where that money's going to go?
So, you just write Kennedy Travel Study Class.
Kennedy Travel Study Class. Okay, and/or they can drop them off at the front desk over there, and Andy or Chris Krenz will know where that money goes?
Yep.
Great. Well, we wish you guys luck, and all, you know, we have thousands of people watching on television, so I'm sure they're writing out checks right now.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
All right, you bet. Thank you for coming. So, I made an assumption that all these bright high school faces here were here to fulfill a government requirement. Are any of you guys here for your government class? It's okay if you're not.
No, we're just here for the word out.
Good. Well, I hope we got the word out. Otherwise, I have this big speech I can give for... And I'm going to, I would have asked you all to come up here and say your name and embarrass you. If you'd like to come on up and say how you can, if you want to make it quick. Oh, they're all shy. They're looking for money, but they're shy. So, all right, well, listen, guys, thanks for coming. All right, so we don't have anyone here for government class. That moves to the Part A agenda. We need a motion to approve Part A as is. Do we have one?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions on Part A before we vote on this? All right, to all those in favor of approving Part A agenda as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, for those of you keeping track on your agenda, we're on Part B, which is Roman numeral six on the back. Going to ask Rod Zivkovich to come up and just sort of stay here, because it looks like your name's on all four, excuse me, all four of these resolutions. So, do we have somebody with a voice that wants to read a resolution? Director Soren?
Mr. Chairman, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the following bids for facility improvements at Valley View Elementary School. And it identifies 18 different vendors that are going to be participating, and we authorize the administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rod, what have you had for us?
Chair Burkestrm, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm here tonight as part of our 1415 alt facility budget plan. This is the first of many that will be coming through the board over the next couple months. This is the Valley View Elementary project, which the total of this project is just over $5 million. Within the next month, you'll also see another project from Indian Mounds, which will be about a similar amount later. One of the additional resolutions here is also for some work that's going to be done at Kennedy over the summer also.
Any board members have any questions? Director Soren?
Mr. Chairman, and it was, along with the package, was the listing of all the different bidders for all of these different portions of the contract. And it's interesting to note that there were quite a few vendors that did bid on this, and at this time of the year, that is an indication of maybe a growing economy. But the fact that we're spending $5 million on the renovation of one of our older buildings in the district, we have the alternative funds that is available to help us offset this. So, it's already been in the budget for about, I think it was maybe, what, $15 million?
Correct.
Identified as building repairs and remodeling, along with the Aldi kindergarten and some of the other improvements that are necessary to bring our buildings up to code. So, it seems like it's a significant amount to the viewer, but it really is something that's going to be so comprehensive that it needs to be done. And so, I support the motion.
Yeah, Director?
Since there's three new board members here, and this is really our first bid, I was wondering if you could take a couple minutes to kind of explain the way the bid process works. I mean, is this like, are they blind bids? Are they, do we always pick the lowest? Are there certain things that we're looking for when we're selecting a bidder or a contractor?
What we do is we set out the bids. We get bid specs and send them out. There are blind bids that come into the district. We expect it at a certain point in time. We have both Carl Sanderson, our construction manager, and also Wold Architecture in the process of opening the bids, reviewing them. Carl Sanderson goes back and does an interview with each of the bid winners to make sure that they understood what the bid spec said, making sure that there wasn't anything that they missed, and working through the whole process. So, it's a long process that we make sure that both, on all the bids that you will see coming through, Carl Sanderson has given their approval for us to move forward with these bids.
So, do we typically take the lowest bid, or, I mean, how do they choose which ones?
We usually try to take the lowest bid if it's the lowest responsible bid.
Okay, so what, like, do we have any requirements that we, as a district, like to see in these contracts, or do we look at each one independently?
We look at each one independently. What they do is they'll take out every single bid, and they'll go through all the processes and have the bid total. There's a bid sheet that each of them presented as part of the bid packet. They present that. They have to make sure that they have their bonds, their, you know, all the different pieces there to be able to make them a qualified bid. And then, we'll go through and look at it. We also look at a lot is prior experience with us. A person could be a low bidder, but if we've had bad experience in the past, we might want to look at that bid a different way and ask some more questions or question some of their bids.
Since we're spending a lot of money on the $5 million for this one, I'm assuming that it's creating a lot of jobs to get this done. Do you have any idea if how many people are going to be employed on?
No, I don't have any idea.
Do we have, any of these bidders have project labor agreements or anything like that?
All of them have agreements within, I mean, that's a part of the whole, being a government contract, because it's government dollars, we have to follow those type of rules.
I'm sorry for all what might seem stupid questions, but it's my first bid, so I want to, you know, make sure I'm thorough and everything.
Yep.
I have similar questions, so thank you. And then, when you say qualified, are there also research, like, the companies all vetted, you know, like consumer complaints against them, that type of thing?
Yes.
When they're all qualified, okay.
And that's the construction manager. That is the benefit of having someone like that that's working with these different companies all the time. They have a good understanding of what the companies are doing. They've, you know, they're dealing with them probably with 10, 15 projects minimum. So, they kind of have a good view of the strong companies, the ones that, you know, do what they say versus the ones that have a lot of change orders to kind of make up some of the difference of a lower bid.
Any other questions? I don't want to stifle conversation. All right, now, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries. Now, we move on to number two on Part B. Do we have a motion? Yes, Director Bennett?
Be resolved that School Board of Independent School District, I'm sorry, let me start that over. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the continuity electrical and over Minnesota bid of $174,700 to install electrical work for technology generators at Oak Grove Middle School, Jefferson High School, and Kennedy High School, and authorize the administration to enter into a contract to accomplish this work.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rod, what do you have for us on this one?
This is another project that will be done over the summer. It's a two-part project that we're bringing to the board today, the electrical part of it. We'll be bringing in future meetings the actual generator piece of the installation and the rest. So, this is a combination between both alt facilities work and then also our capital projects, technology levy. What this is allowing us to do is that when we have storms, when we have power outages, the three main bases for our phone systems, our computer systems, will now be on an automatic generator that someone doesn't have to come out in the middle of the night and start up the new generator. They can, it automatically kicks in.
Any other questions? Any... All right. Well, let's move to vote. Those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that one carries. We're looking at number three. This is the mechanical improvements for Kennedy. Do we have a resolution? Director Scott Steigl?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the Climate Makers Brooklyn Center Minnesota bid of $382,300 to install mechanical improvements at Kennedy High School, and authorize the administration to enter into a contract to accomplish this work.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
This is another project that's part of the 1415 alt facility plan. It's, we have already purchased the HVAC piece of this. This is just the labor to put the HVAC in place.
Any questions? HVAC is heating, ventilation, and air conditioning?
Yes, correct.
Just another acronym. All right, we move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries. We're down to our last one, naming of an auditor. Do we have a resolution? Anyone like to read that one? Director Soren?
Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 appoint Kern Dwyer Vier Limited to perform a general financial audit conforming to state and federal guidelines. The appointment is for five years with the following fee structure: Years one and two, $36,500; Year three, $36,700; Year four, $37,000; and Year five, $37,200.
Do we have a second?
Why is there a difference in the pay structure year to year?
Looking for an inflationary increase.
Okay.
Which is less than a percent.
Okay.
They have not raised, we, this is our current auditor. They have not raised their rates since '910.
Okay.
Just so we get this one clear, I think we're still looking for a second on that.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, again. Okay. Doesn't make your question not valid. I just want to make sure we're following.
Did we seek other bids for our auditor, or is this the...
We had four. We sent out four requests for proposal. One of the audit firms declined because they're working for us in another venture, which it would be a conflict of interest for them to be doing, being our audit. We had two other bids. One, we decided early on that we were, that it was not a bid that we would accept. It was between two firms. One of the firms, we are working, doing some audit information with them already. And what we did is, because the quotes were fairly close, and actually, the KDV actually matched the others' quote, that we decided that it was better for the district to stay with the existing accounting firm.
Yeah, Director Soren?
That's an interesting perspective. So, we were hiring this auditing firm to perform the general financial audit, and we do use other accounting firms, auditing firms for various other projects, departments, and different things like that, too, right?
There are really three big auditing firms around. We're using all three of them in some venture.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving through this agenda relatively quick. Now, we get down to board member reports. This is an opportunity for board members to share what they've been up to since our last meeting. It can include committees. It can include whatever you've been doing in the district. You're free to share or not as you please. Would anyone care to start?
I got to pull it up first.
Okay. Director Oliva?
I had the district curriculum advisory committee meeting. They, we had a K5 art music update. In music, they're working on what they call a windows and mirrors-based approach, so that the students can experience a wide variety of music. Not only, that not only mirrors their own interests, but also gives them a window into other cultures. So, I thought that was a neat way to look at that. And in the art curriculum that they're developing, they're trying to go towards more of a choice-based approach in what they're doing versus a product-based. Right now, in art, it's mostly, you know, make this project, or paint this picture, or use this technique, and then we'll judge you on how well you... use this technique and then we'll judge you on how well you did that technique versus the, the artistic process. What materials did I use? Why did I choose these materials? Things like that. So they're, they're trying to steer it in more of a, give, give the students more ownership over their own creativity versus saying, do it with this, with this kind of materials and make this project. We also had an update on the new reading standards that are coming out. We've heard that some reports, I think Dr. Heisit came in and mentioned that if you'll notice, like in third grade, it, when we get the third grade test scores back this year, it may appear as though all of a sudden, all of our kids aren't as good as they were last year, but that's because the, the standards are different and the way that the teacher's completely different, so it's a new way of, of looking at it. And the way they explain it is it's more comprehension based as opposed to simply being able to read the words on the paper, which is how it is now. And then, I did Bloomington United for Youth meeting and they wanted to mention that they're doing the Box City Vigil, which is May 30th at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. They're having a teen job fair, March 13th at City Hall, which is this Thursday, I believe that'd be. And then they're still trying to launch, I was going to look this up, but I think they call it Common Grounds, which is supposed to be kind of a teen gathering center here in Bloomington. So that's all I have.
All right. Any, anyone else? Yes, Director Bennett?
So several weeks ago, Director Corman and Director Steigoff and I went to the joint legislative conference down in, in St. Paul, the Capitol, and I think Director Corman's going to be talking about that, but what I want to talk about is, one of the breakout sessions we had, they gave out these fashionably lovely little wristbands that say, stand up for public schools, and I knew that few board members that weren't there would be so jealous that you didn't get any, that I went and I got some for you all, so.
You read my mind.
One for you and one for you. I get them with the rig. And also last Monday, since we didn't have any meeting scheduled, I went to the Richfield School Board meeting. So I feel it's good that we need to, you know, form relationships with our, our neighbors and they, like us, have three new board members and also like us, I think they have four, four or five members that have either three years of sort of service on the board or less. So it was kind of fun to see how they operate their board meeting. They do it a little different. The, the only one there wearing a tie was the superintendent, so it's kind of a little more casual, they, they call each other by their first names and, and they just speak out, they don't raise their hand to get addressed or anything. And one thing that they had that I really liked was that they had three student representatives on their school board. I think that's something that would be great if we could maybe have that conversation at some point of having student representatives on, on our school board.
What grades were they?
They were seniors.
Okay.
And one of them, I think last year they told me had got the, because NSBA puts out, gives a scholarship to student school board members and one of them got the scholarship. So an extra $5,000 for, for college.
Wow.
So.
Very nice. Any other members? Director Steigoff.
Director Bennett and I both attended the district PTSA meeting where we were asked to talk about the upcoming legislative day that I think Director Corman will be touching on in a minute. I also attended the CCC, which is the Community Collaborative Meeting, where the main discussion there was about World's Best Workforce and, and the integration plan, which will now be part of World's Best Workforce and how that works being accomplished. We also had several students from leadership there to talk about their experiences in the leadership programs in the district. I also attended the Safe and Drug Free School Meeting and that is where we heard, saw the first report of the Minnesota Student Survey from 2013, which the board will be getting an update on that at a future meeting. But that is the survey where the students talk about their drug use, alcohol use, tobacco use, et cetera. So then I also attended the Special Education Advisory Meeting and I just wanted to note that Eric Melby, Director Student Services, was recently on a panel of experts that was meeting the mental health needs of our children, creating environments that lead to healthy student development and positive outcomes for all students. That was at the Basilica and was sponsored by Basilica Mental Health Committee and NAMI and he was one of their experts and was nice to represent Bloomington schools there. We also have the nomination letters for the special caring awards, I think have gone out to all district staff, so please get those in so that we can recognize staff, bus drivers, other students, anyone in the lunchroom, anyone that goes above and beyond for special needs students, the special advisory council would like to recognize them. We also have an upcoming, let's talk about transition, community conversations about transition services for individuals with disabilities, that our school district is partnering with the Autism Society of Minnesota and we will be hosting that presentation on Tuesday, April 29th in this building. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, who else?
My turn?
Yes.
I have chosen to remain quiet tonight, but they want me to talk. Okay, so yeah, we, as Director Steigoff and Director Bennett said, we attended the February seven, 27 joint legislative conference with MSBA, where we got to hear insights from legislative leaders about topics, issues that are, have to do with the cities, the counties, and education and others. One of those leaders was Representative Ann Lucheski, she was part of the panel presenting that day. Then we got to go to the Capitol with, where we got to hear discussion and issues about education with Speaker of the House. We also have our own, our own meeting for the Legislative Committee for the School Board and it's the three of us, Director Bennett and Director Steigoff, and we had a conversation about proposed bills that are currently in the, being discussed in the legislation about education and kind of choosing the ones that we consider are more relevant or affecting our, directly our school district. So we came up with a list of them that will be presented during our forum with the legislators this coming Saturday. So I will just tell you really quick what they are. Talked about the Safe and Supportive Schools, early, early childhood education bills, safe school levy, QCOM, teachers evaluation, and also the Health Insurance Transparency Act. The next, I can tell you that I also had a conversation, very meaningful conversation with Superintendent Fujitaki and Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox about the, the committee, the advisory committee that is recommended for the plan, the World's Best Workforce Plan. So we kind of identified some, some points that we had in common agreement and I think it was a very good conversation, so I really appreciate that. The other thing is also attended the Latino Parent Association meeting where Eric Melby was there and as well as Dina from Office of Educational Equity and both of them came to talk to our parents about the integration plan, the new integration plan, and also to give some information about World's Best Workforce Plan. That was also a very good meeting, I think I, I should highlight the work that Eric Melby is, is doing or is, is trying to do and the approach that he is taking and informing all of our different groups and really truly understanding how to have those conversations with parents from different communities. And then the last one, oh, not the last one, before the last one, also attended the Little Mermaid play in Oak Grove Middle School, so that's another, that was another great play to see, you know, they're all, all of our Bloomington schools plays are great, but that was, that was, that was really good too. And then the last one is I'd like to talk about the forum, the coming forum that we have on March 15, which is this coming Saturday. This is the Legislative Committee of the Board in, have invited, has invited the, our legislators to come and participate on a forum where we're going to be having conversation regarding legislative that is focused on the 2014 session. So this is kind of going to be an opportunity to strengthen relationships between the school board, the legislation, the legislation and the community of Bloomington. The forum is going to be held here in this room, the Arlene Bush Board Room, March 15 from 8:00 to 9:30 and, you know, different members, presidents of committees have been invited, so all of our community is invited to be here and attend. It's going to be broadcast live with Bloomington Education Cable Television, once again, like it's been done in past years. And yeah, that's pretty much it, so we hope we can see everybody here that day, it'll be great.
Great, and that's, just so we know, that's eight in the morning?
Eight in the morning, yes. Eight to 9:30 in the morning, so we're hoping that you, everybody gets up early and come and join us.
We'll put some extra chairs out.
Right.
Anyone else? Before I grab my, my list, okay. All right, I, I had the opportunity to attend a board meeting for District 917. I sit on that board as well as a representative from Bloomington. That was an interesting meeting as we did not have a quorum, so we could not talk about items that we needed to vote on, we just had some robust discussion and that one ended a little sooner. Also had the opportunity to tour the Dakota County Technical College campus, which is where our 917 boardroom exists. But Bloomington sends some students out there. I looked at the, the cooking, the technology, the large diesel mechanic program, the carpentry program, et cetera. Also had a chance to tour Alliance Education Center. Most of the students out there, I believe, are on the autism spectrum in, in some respect and we have some students that, that are involved there as well. Had a first negotiation meeting with our custodial transportation, essentially introductions, listen and learn, and we had some nice, healthy treats, bananas and apples there. Had an opportunity to, to attend the White Tiger Rally over at Olson Elementary. If you haven't been to a White Tiger Rally, you need to go, it's a lot of fun, there's another one coming up soon here and it's on their, their webpage. When I was at that White Tiger Rally, I met some visitors, I think there was nine or 10 folks that were visiting the Twin Cities and they were from Turkey. And there was a kindergarten or a first grade student, young lady got up, grabbed the microphone and said hello in their native language and they just erupted. So it was, that was worth going to the White Tiger Rally that in and of itself, but it was a lot of fun. Later that evening, had a chance to go over to the carnival at Olson Elementary and believe it or not, I got roped into work in the prize booth, so that was a lot of fun. I had the 10-point prizes, so that was the hard sell, but I did pretty good. Had a chance to stop in at Olson Middle to see their play, the State Fair. That was a lot of fun, they do a good job over there. Also had a chance to watch Nellie's Daughter over at, right here across the way to Little Mermaid, that was date night for my wife and I, I know we're, we get home at nine o'clock and that's it, but that was a lot of fun to see that particular play. Had a chance to serve breakfast at Normandale Hills Elementary for National Breakfast Week. It's fun to see those kids come through, get a good, healthy breakfast. That was, that was a lot of fun. Also attended the PC, PTSA council meeting. They are gearing up for, among other things, the Veep food drive, that'll happen in the last week in April. Also had an opportunity to, to attend the teacher appreciation lunch over at Pond Center. That's hosted by the Parent Advisory Council and they, they handed out the award for the Heart of the Young Child Award winner this year and I'm, I'm pleased to announce it was Heather Starks, who happens to be the president of the Parent Advisory Council. So congratulations to Heather. And I think that ends my notes. Now everyone can breathe easy because we're going to get to the superintendent's reports.
Thank you. I'll add to Director Corman's announcement about the legislative forum this Saturday. As she stated, the legislative committee is organizing and hosting this forum. Committee members are Director Bennett, Director Steigoff, and the chair is Director Corman. What's impressive about this forum is that all five of our state legislators have informed us that they will participate in this session. And this morning, this committee and I met with Senator Wicklin, thanks to Director Steigoff being able to get Senator Wicklin to spare some of her valuable time to meet with us and we discussed a pending bill in the, in the session. Move on to the second topic. Administration requests a motion to establish a school board session, study session on Monday, March 17th at 6:30 PM here at the Educational Service Center in the Arlene Bush Board Room. Session topics will be board and superintendent goals. So may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, all those in favor of the study session, it'll be next Monday?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
All right, thank you. This is an announcement, the youth advisory council of the school board will meet on March 24th at 5:00 PM in the media center at Oak Grove Middle School. Middle school representatives of this youth advisory council will meet with the board. No, no motion is needed. This meeting will be at 5:00. Upon, and that meeting will run from 5:00 to 6:00, is to be followed by a school board meeting. And, and that's going to start at 6:30 here in the Arlene Bush Board Room. Upon, I need a motion to establish a school board closed session for negotiations on Monday, March 24th at 8:30 PM or upon conclusion of the reglies of the study session that will follow the board meeting. So whichever comes first, the conclusion of the study session that follows the board meeting or 8:30 PM. The closed session will be in room 6001. So may I have a motion, please?
Who wants to second that?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Just to ask for protocol, do we need to vote on this? Okay, so those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll close by clarifying the lineup for March 24th. 5:00 to 6:00 PM would be the youth advisory council with middle school representatives. At 6:30, the school board meeting will be started and it's to be followed by the study session. At 8:30 earlier, upon conclusion of the study session, the closed session for negotiations will begin. So that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, that moves us to the other part. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to discuss? Now we move to adjournment, so I'm, I'm reminded by Director Bennett that I've been skipping a step and, and I, I don't want to skip steps, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, moved and seconded. All right. All those in favor?
We don't need to vote for that.
Well, gotta be in favor of adjournment. All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.